Sunday Sales, Keokuk Spirits, 1013 Main Street, effective March 1st, 2018. Class E liquor license with Sunday Sales. Lucky's Irish Pub and Grub, 528 Blondo Street. Class C liquor license with outdoor service and Sunday Sales. A resolution approving an urban revitalization tax exemption for the following homeowner. Robert Earhart, 603 Bank Street, a 22 by 25 foot attached garage. The appointment of John Moander to the Airport Zoning Commission turned to expire May 5th, 2022. And a motion to pay bills and transfers listed within the registers numbers 4980-4982. Do I have a motion to approve that agenda, including the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second in the discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 7A. Now is the time and place for a public hearing for the disposal of 1113 and 1117 Concert Street. A public hearing notice was published in the day late at City on January 29th of 2018. I'm opening the public hearing at 6:35. And the hearings are now open. Aaron?
We received one proposal. This is the proposal that actually triggered the public hearing for disposal. The proposal was from Keokuk Neighborhood Initiative. They are seeking to acquire the property for the development of new infill housing. They are proposing to build a house, a home of greater than $125,000 in value that will include a garage. And the whole point of their project is to try and prove the viability of infill housing and work towards neighborhood reinvestment. And so this is a good sized lot and a good place for them to do that. And so they submitted a proposal. Their hope is to have the home constructed before the end of the year.
Any comments, questions? Okay. Any further discussion? None. Clark, have you had any written objections?
No.
Okay, there being no more comments or objections, we'll close the public hearing at 6:36. We need to consider a resolution disposing of 1113 and 1117 Concert Street. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We need to consider a resolution, item eight, consider a resolution setting a public hearing for 6:30 PM, March 15th, 2018 into the city council chambers, 415 Blondo Street, for disposal of 619 and 623 Main Street. Aaron, you want to discuss that again?
So these are the properties the city acquired through 657 action against Brian Boyd. They were, when they were taken, they were cleaned out. There are actually two properties that are very viable. They definitely have issues with them, but they're solid structures. They're ready to have new investment and new business put into them. And so we're putting those out for proposals with this project. The proposals will, this and the next resolution, both of these projects will be based off the, you know, jobs, investment, amount paid, nature of the business, and about 10 other items that the council can consider when they review the proposal. You don't just have to accept the highest amount paid. You can consider the total benefit to the community by what the project will do and the investment will do. So we have had folks reach out to both Pam and myself, expressing interest. Hopefully, we can get a good proposal that the council can move forward with and see new investment in this area. Obviously, that's a block that's had a lot of difficulty, but I think this is a great step forward towards reinvigorating that area.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Item nine, consider a resolution setting a public hearing for 6:30 PM, March 15th, 2018, into city council chambers, 415 Blondo Street, for disposal of 614, 616, 618, 620, 624, 626, and 628 Main Street.
So...
Go ahead.
So this is the area directly across the street. Again, this was the Brian Boyd property, the burnt down structure. And then also, the, I think it's Mitch McCall owned the other one. And so the city went through and acquired this property, I think primarily through 657 action. Again, that's a state property taking code for dilapidated buildings. We used that, we were able to gain ownership for this area. And it also includes the two-story structure directly next to Jason James Chiropractic Business. And so all of these are being lumped together. Anyone who submits a proposal for either property can separate them out and just bid on an individual part of it. The idea to put them together is frankly, larger parcels are a heck of a lot more attractive to folks than a small sliver. So we, this one, there are several people who are interested in it. It doesn't mean that all of them will actually come in through and submit a proposal, but I think this parcel has a lot of interest and shows a lot of promise for downtown that we have some good ideas coming out of the woodwork on this one, so.
Aaron, was 628 a portion of that going to be retained for widening?
628, yeah. So the council doesn't have to dispose of the whole thing.
Okay.
So they can separate out 30 feet. If a proposal includes that, then they can just tell them that they won't sell it.
That's the turn lane onto seven.
Yeah, so one of the things that's been kicked around, obviously, when we did the Transportation Safety Improvement Program grant, we were talking about widening out that radius there. And I think that it makes sense to hold on to part of that. You know, we put a full turning lane in, I don't know, but you'd probably want a wider right of way.
Further, would the city have, on these proposals, any say about how the property is utilized if it were sold? I mean, for example, for construction for a business or turning it into a parking lot, let's say?
Any of those, the city will, like, it's the same as the last one. You can use any of the criteria, investment, jobs, use...
So that's the same as the other side?
You know, new taxes, if you are growing the tax base, you can decide on any of those. And additionally, anything can be put into the development agreement that requires the owner to do whatever they set out in the proposal. So anything that, what I urge people when they go through those processes, you need to be very clear about what you say you're going to do, that you're actually going to do it, because we're going to hold you to that through a development agreement. So, you know, if they fail to perform, then we try to utilize that to claw back and make them perform in what they said or try and figure out a way to acquire ownership and get it into somebody else's hands.
Well, that's what I was trying to get at, is trying to get it back if they don't comply with the proposal. And we're, the city's spending more money in litigating and stuff like that, whereas before, if we can have it, some assurance before going in, how it's going to be utilized and, you know.
We'll always end up in court. We always end up spending money when it comes to...
Yeah, we just try to do the best we can, I guess.
But you protect yourself as much as you can with a development agreement, taking the proper steps. And, you know, in the end, if somebody chooses to not perform, you'll have to take them to court and use that development agreement to force them to comply. I don't think we'll have issues with proposals that are out there. Frankly, I think they're...
Well, that's what we're having a public hearing for, to see what comes up, so.
I think there's, on this one, I think you'll see some pretty good proposals.
That'll be helpful to have that. I would love to see something there that's an asset to the city. Do we have a motion to approve, item nine?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Number 10, consider a resolution setting a public hearing for March 1st, 2018 on the proposed 2018-2019 city budget. Again, we just went over that. You need even more discussion on that?
Well, we've talked about this, just for the sake of people who are watching. It's been, we've been through multiple budget meetings on this. We've discussed it several times. It is a difficult budget, a very lean budget due to constraints as far as increasing healthcare costs and decreased funding through property taxes and property tax reform. So we just, it's been a struggle to get to this point and we'll continue to work on keeping it accountable should we experience any more changes from the state or, you know, more changes as far as healthcare costs to make sure that we're continuing to provide high-quality service in all the ways that the city provides services, but, you know, not easy.
Aaron, given that we're working on this, is there a deadline that it has to be submitted by? I mean, I know that there's going to be a hearing and, what, the first of March, so.
Yeah, so the first of March, it kind of, the state program works back for you. And it says, okay, so when do you want to have your, when can you have your public hearing to allow enough time that there could be an appeal? If somebody wanted to appeal the budget, that they get a chance to appeal and you still can turn it in time. And so that works us back to March 1st. And then you have to figure out, when are you going to submit that to the newspaper to be published? So then it chews back to when the public hearing publication has to go out. And Ellen and I actually had a lot of conversation about this just today, because then the further complication was the fact that President's Day is occurring and there's no newspaper on that day. So we lose yet another day of when that public notice can go out. So actually, the public notice will be in the newspaper tomorrow. If there was a change, we'd have to set a public hearing and publish a new public notice. But, yeah, it's a tight timeframe. Frankly, that's why I wanted to have the budget out to you guys probably about two months, or two weeks earlier. And it just, because of how difficult this year was and our accounting software not being very easy to work with, we ended up delaying it two weeks. So now we're really up against the timeframe of, without doing a special hearing or a special meeting, we really need to get it out now, because just to allow enough time. It also doesn't help that the meetings, the first meeting in March is March 1st. So that pushes the timeframe up a little bit, too. So it's kind of a unique year in that respect.
So what we're doing is considering the resolution to set a public hearing. That's all we're setting now. So we need a motion to approve that.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 11. Consider a resolution... I silenced it. Consider a resolution setting a public hearing for six, excuse me, I'm back here. Number 11. Consider a resolution setting a date and time for bid opening and public hearing on the sanitary sewer rehabilitation phase one project. Mark, you want to highlight that?
That is going to be our part repair project that we're going to try and complete.
So it's 600,000 in CDBG funds that we received through a grant, so. Fixing what area?
17th Street North, both sides of Main Street.
There you go.
Great. Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item 12, consider a resolution to relocate, reallocate funds to expand the north boat ramp near the Keokuk Yacht Club. Again, Mark?
So that is kind of addition to some insurance things that was taken care of. We've got an insurance company that can take care of all the damage, the cost of the work that was damaged, but that allows for an opportune time to extend that to make it a little more user-friendly.
Okay on it? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Motion to approve commercial contractor facade grant request located at 21 South 9th Street. Main Street presented that proposal. Do we need any further, anybody need any further explanations on that?
Just, let me just add one thing. I would just say, anybody, it's a great project. The facade grants really, you know, they don't pay for the full project, but they do a matching percentage of the project. And anybody who's interested in any Main Street facade work, it's great. Reach out to Joyce, reach out to me, reach out to anybody affiliated with it and shop it around, because I think it does make a lot of improvements. You see that the people who've used it really make their buildings stand out when they do it, so.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Item 14, motion to approve engagement letter for three years with Anderson Larkin and Company PC to provide audit services for the city of Keokuk. Aaron?
Anderson Larkin currently completes our audit. The next agenda item actually is the audit, but this will extend them for three years with the city. They've been very good to work with and strongly recommend signing the engagement letter.
So moved.
Second. Second. Any further discussion?
I just note that last time around, we had a difficult time shopping for an auditor. And now that we've got one, I think we need to keep him.
Yeah. That's true. There's not a lot of auditors left in the state. And I think they're thinning out as time passes. Apparently, not a lot of people are interested in doing audits, so.
It's exciting work.
But it's something that we have required, you know.
You can write your own, write your own way.
We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 15, receive audit report for fiscal year 2017 and place on file.
Only thing I'll mention here, obviously, the audit is available. It's available to anybody in the public if they want to come look at it. It's hard to go through this without, you know, killing a good hour or two talking about it. But just to hit the high points, the only adverse opinion was for the component unit. The component unit is the waterworks. It's been noted on three previous, or two previous audits. It's not something that we can change. It is a, the waterworks is on an accrual basis. The city's on a cash basis. There's just, there's no way to really mesh, to get the financials to mesh, nor would it provide a clear picture of what the city is doing considering the fact that the waterworks operates completely independent of the city. So while we do have an adverse opinion on that, I don't believe many people really are concerned with that. Our bond rating is affected by it. Our conversations with the state auditor, there's never been an issue with it. And other cities have this situation that does occur with them. So while there is one adverse opinion, it will always be there and it will not cause us any problems. Other than that, the audit was clean. No other adverse opinions. And I think it went smooth. We did not have any great change in position cash-wise. Over the last year, there were a few projects that didn't get off the ground. So we actually increased reserves a little bit because we did not finish capital projects in that year. You'll see those balances go back down as the capital projects are expended in this current fiscal year. So the next audit, you'll see that happen. But everything stayed pretty close to what we had anticipated as far as our budgets.
I need a motion to receive and place on file the 2017 audit report?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 16, motion to approve Keokuk Park's foundation request to resurface the Fifth Street tennis courts to six pickleball courts per recommendation of the City of Keokuk Park and Recreation Advisory Board if fundraising goals are met and net. Oh, I'm sorry. Carol? Carol? Oh, when you're up there, you have to state your name and address. Okay.
Yeah, we need demonstration.
No pickleball demonstrations tonight then, right? It's off the docket. And you enjoyed it, didn't you?
Oh, yeah. So what we would like to do, our foundation, is getting ready to go into grant writing season. So we wanted to come before the council here to ask permission to use the tennis courts on North Fifth Street, because right now they're not being utilized. And we would like to write grants so that we can resurface it and turn it into, have it remarked and everything for six pickleball courts. And that way, right now, everyone is playing at the Y and it's very inaccessible for people that are working or go to school or something because it's only accessible of the morning. So, you know, so we'd like to take this project on and we think it will be a benefit to Keokuk because pickleball is becoming a very up-and-coming sport throughout the nation. And I think it'd be good to get our feet in the ground and have a good court, because it could be a lot with promote tourism, booking tournaments. It would help a lot to benefit all age groups in Keokuk also, so. So that's what we're here for this evening.
I see it says, if fundraising goals are met, do you know what that goal is? And what's your plan to do that fundraising?
We've already got two estimates, because we've, you know, been looking into this for some time now. And if we resurface the court and without a warranty on the cracks and things, what is the court can be resurfaced and it'll have the fountain. And you know exactly how that, the first one's going to be.
The cracks will be repaired and they'll put all the nets up and replace the post and everything like that. It'll have a two-year warranty, not on cracks, but on workmanship, and it's $47,200. To replace it, the complete resurface and then everything besides the post and nets and everything, for a 25-year guarantee, warranty, it would be $101,900. But the pickleball players seem to think that, or the ones we've talked to, that even if we do the $47,000, it would still hold up. It would hold up for quite a while.
And you're going out after grants to...
And fundraising. And we did get the recommendation of the park board.
I'm glad to see that somebody's got a use for that area, because it's been needing something in it for a long time.
Well, I think we'll be surprised. It'll be used so much more than what we think. So I think it's a wonderful project to take on.
I think it's great.
The Park and Rec Board Tuesday night had also made a pledge up to $5,000 to help get this going.
Anybody have any other questions? Will somebody be willing to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're on our way to new pickleball courts in town. Perfect. Thank you. Item 17, consider a resolution to approve a submittal of a Clean Water SRF Water Resource Restorations Sponsored Program Application Phase 3. Mark?
This is an application that would be just like the previous sponsored projects and be up to 10% off of the loan that we buy, or we're getting for the tunnel project. That would be 1.4 million above and beyond the 14 we're loaning, but then we'd get a roll down on the interest rate to cover it. And we'd be going after more pavers in Rand Park.
So you said to complete all the pavers in Rand?
Yeah, I mean, we're looking at doing everything in Rand Park with the exception of Park Lane Extension between Orleans and 17th.
One thing I'd just mention with this, because we got this question about a million times when we did this project last time. Pavers, permeable pavers are what's funded by this grant source. Permeable pavers do not work in heavy traffic areas. They don't work everywhere. That's why these streets are being identified, because it's a park. You're not putting heavy trucks on it. You're not, you're not, it's not the same as everywhere else. So it's the projects being identified there because the pavers work there. It can't be used to put asphalt on a street or anything like that. And furthermore, it's complete funding from the SRF dollars, so. If anything, a very small amount of city dollars go into it, so. Just want to clear that up. I won't get that question, I'm sure.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Who had the second?
I'll do second if you didn't have me for the motion.
Item 18, do we have any committee reports? Item eighteen, do we have any committee reports? Do we have any new business? We'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.
A motion.
Oh, a motion to adjourn, I did that again.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, second. Yes, second. Motion to adjourn. We got it, a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're done. Thank you.